According to recent studies, twenty to thirty percent of fatal opioid overdoses could actually be suicides. It could even be higher than that. Suicide is complicated and not everyone shows the same warning signs. If you're concerned about someone struggling with a drug problem or someone who may be at risk of suicide, I'm here to help you and you could come see me. I'm Lieutenant Michael Stokes and I'm with the Waterbury Police Department.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this July first, two thousand twenty-one Waterbury Board of Education Workshop Committee meeting. We are doing this as a virtual meeting tonight via Zoom. And our first order of business tonight is a silent prayer. Dr. Ruffin, do you have anything to add in before we break for the prayer?
I do not tonight, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you much. And we'll be right back after we do the silent prayer. Commissioner Tom Van Stone, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance because you did a wonderful job with it?
It'd be my honor.
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Uh, next agenda item, public speaking, and I think I heard that we have no one on the call.
That is correct.
Thank you, sir. First order of business is a request approval of the revised two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two school year calendar, along with new calendars for school years twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four. Dr. Ruffin, I believe the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I'll ask Will Zuda to speak to that, please.
Good evening, Commissioners, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Dr. Ruffin. The proposed two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two calendar changes that we present, that we put in for, in front of you, we moved the start date to August thirtieth. We wanted to give the students a whole week. Principals believe that giving kids the whole week versus a partial week to start school, it helps kids focus a lot, lot better in school. We added an early dismissal on the first Wednesday of every month for all schools. And Commissioner Network Schools will have an early dismissal every Wednesday of every month, except where there's a planned open house or a parent-teacher night schedule. We adjusted the April break because it kind of won't align with surrounding towns. We looked at Wilted and Watertown are off April nineteenth to the twenty-second. That Friday was the Good Friday. And then Prospect and Middlebury and Southbury are off April eleventh to the fourteenth. And that obviously Friday, the fifteenth is being Good Friday. And the last day of school would be adjusted to June thirteenth. Any questions on the twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar?
I just had an overall question, if I may, Dr. Ruffin, I think I had sent you, you asked for a response. Will, will there still be office hours in, for the teachers included in this calendar? The way you did during the pandemic because I, I heard from parents, it was very helpful.
I, I think the, the office hours, we did get a lot of positive feedback, but we did not embed them in the calendar. I think that that could be something that we would put in our opening of school plan, but not necessarily in a calendar.
Okay, okay, thank you, because I think it was very helpful. I, I heard a lot of positive because they knew that the teachers were there that could call, so thank you, okay.
Anyone else have a question at this stage? All right.
On the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three calendar, this is our, so same type of thing. We wanted to start schools off with a full week. All schools will have an early dismissal on the first Wednesday of every month. Commissioner Network Schools will continue to have an early dismissal every Wednesday of every month, except where there's the planned open house or parent-teacher night schedule. And then April break again did not align with Wilted or Middlebury, Southbury or Watertown. Were the only schools that we found calendars for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So we kind of put the April break in on there from the tenth to the fourteenth. On the twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four calendar, same thing, full week. First Wednesday of every month would be the early dismissal. Commercial Network Schools will continue to have the early dismissal every Wednesday of every month. April break, no other calendars out there, so we moved the April break that we thought would best suit our district. And the last day of school for that year would be June tenth. That would be the hundred eighty-first school day. Any questions? Thank you.
Any questions for Will or Dr. Ruffin while we have them both engaged? Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number two is a request of approval of an agreement with Clydesdale Manufacturing Company for manufacturing externship slash pre-apprentice program for Waterbury Career Academy students. Mr. Harris, haven't I seen you already once this week at Barnes and Noble?
Yes, you have, Mr. President. How are you doing? Good to see you.
Who's taking the lead here, Mr. Schwartz or you?
I can start it off and then we'll, we'll let Mr. Harris jump in if he's like, has anything to add, if that's okay.
That sounds good to me.
All right, good evening, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, board members, and of course Superintendent Ruffin. Tonight before you, we have an ongoing agreement with Clydesdale Manufacturing. This is a three-year contract to allow students at the Waterbury Career Academy to, to be involved in a workplace instruction and training program at Clydesdale. Students will be paid for this internship. Typically, we have four to five students a year to, that take advantage of this opportunity. And we look forward to continuing this agreement. Mr. Harris and I are here to answer any questions that the board has regarding this.
Okay, the floor is open to questions or comments. Karen Harvey, is your hand up?
Yes, it is.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Darren, um, I was looking at the contract, uh, let's see, let's see, page, page four of the contract where the signatures are. Um, just check that because I think it was Robert, if I'm looking at the right one, Robert Graff Garth. And he signed it twenty-seven, two.
Yeah, I noticed, I know. I noticed that also, Commissioner, that he, he, he forgot the last three digits on his, on his.
Yeah.
So when we get the official, um, if we get the official go-ahead, we'll loop back with Clydesdale and make sure he adds that zero two.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Not a problem. That's all I.
Is that all, Karen?
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else got a question or comment? Okie dokie. We're on to the next item. Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Item number three, request approval of a memorandum of agreement with the State Education Resource Center, otherwise known as CERC, for alternative schools pilot program. I don't know who this goes to, so I'm thinking it's probably Mr. Schwartz because he's smiling. I'm mute.
I'm smiling because I believe our clerk has something to add to this and then I'm here for.
Yes, this, this item was given to me through Dr. Epperson, who is no longer with us. And then the attorney who's at Corporation Council was on vacation this week, so I was not able to confirm it in time for the meeting. So it'll be, it'll go on your regular meeting with someone to address it on the fifteenth. Okay?
Okay. But we have all the documents that we need from them in the meantime.
You do, but I believe there's a contact on there and maybe a date that needs to be changed too. So that's why I wanted to speak with the attorney.
Yeah, that is, that is correct. President Pagano and board members, there is a few minor changes that I noticed when reviewing the agreement that, that need to be buttoned up. And we will do that as soon as the attorney gets back and so that we have a clean copy for you. Unfortunately, that couldn't happen before tonight.
Good. Um, moving on to the next agenda item then. Item number four, a request of approval of agreement with Dumichel Paper Company of Connecticut Incorporated to provide green cleaning products. Mr. Chris Harmon, your name is on this one.
Yes, what it was is, it's for three years. It's for two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Dumichel got it and there were six bidders on it. And it'll be over June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, anybody got questions for Mr. Harmon while we have him available? All right, Chris, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Our next agenda item is number five, a request approval to apply for the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers grant for the following. And these all need a consensus needed. Louise Allen Brown, Noreen Buckley, and Darren Schwartz. Who has, who's, who do I tee this up to? Louise?
Yes, thank you, President Pagano. Vice President Harvey, Dr. Ruffin. These are, radio applications are due on July fifteenth. That's why we're requesting consensus. They are opportunities that we have accessed before to provide academics enrichment, recreation, and positive youth development activities for students and after-school times. As you can see, the schools listed there represent three separate applications for which the state would apply to these grants. A local match requirement in years four and five of fifty percent. I'm sorry, twenty-five percent in year four and fifty percent in year five. Additionally, on the elementary schools only, because of the number of students in the two schools together, there are excess costs for transportation starting in year one of approximately eleven thousand four hundred dollars per year that also would contribute to the local match total. Our CFO, Doreen Diolo, has reviewed those figures and has given her approval of providing those match funds if these grants were to be awarded to Waterbury. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Louise while we have her? Nobody's waving their hands, so I assume then we could go on. Oh, wait, Karen Harvey, are you waving your hand?
Yes, I am.
All right, the floor is ears.
All right, so Louise, just, just a quick question. Would this interfere in any way with our ESRA funds? Anything that we decide to do in addition to this grant at these schools? Does it have any connection or?
Well, it's not connected to those funds at all. It's a separate pot of money from the U.S. Department of Education for twenty-four CCLC grants. However, the principals, who I would think are quite familiar with the different funding streams and how they're using them, have all weighed in and requested these grants for their schools. And they also serve a limited number of students in specific grades. So there would also be opportunities to serve other students through other grants.
Okay, okay, that's good. All right, thank you. Thank you, Louise.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Anybody else got a question? Commissioner Tom Van Stone, I see you're in.
You do, thank you. Just, uh, hopefully it's just a clarification typo. Louise, right above your signature on page two, it says deadline for proposals is July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
That's a typo. I apologize. That should be twenty-one.
Okay, that's all I had. Okay.
Thank you. I, 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 you need a consensus and I'm just giving my thumbs up on this. If everyone who has got a, like, everyone's got the thumbs up, so thank you, everyone. Louise, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Our next agenda item is a request approval of professional services agreement with Empirical Resolution Incorporated, also known as quill.org for online grammar and writing program. Dr. Michelle Eckler and Darren Schwartz, I see your names tagged with this, so who wants to tee it up?
All right, I'd love to start it, but I want to start off by thanking Dr. Eckler for helping shepherd this process through, especially in my absence while we welcomed a new member to our family. And so Dr. Eckler is here tonight with us. And I know she is extremely excited about this and our next agenda item. This is a, a five-year contract for fifty-three thousand dollars that will allow us to leverage the online grammar and writing for students in grades six through eight that is aligned with our curriculum that we have passed in the, through the curriculum committee for middle school students. And, and I'll let Dr. Eckler take it from there and, and talk about why she's so excited about bringing this to our middle school students.
Sure. So quill.org was, out of the two people that we had put in proposals, was the one that we found to be the best, best aligned with our existing curriculum. And it also has an amazing assessment platform that will allow us to really continue to figure out where our students' needs are with grammar. And the best part is that it aligns right into what our high school staff have access to through our springboard system. So quill.org was our number one choice and it's really exciting for me because I really like writing and think it's extremely important to have our middle school, middle school students really on board with understanding grammar and how to write well.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone have questions for Dr. Eckler? Charles Stango and then Liz Brown. Charles, you're muted. Is there something we said, Charles?
No.
There you go.
Okay, I'm wondering, would this be online during school time or can it be done after school or anywhere or what's the story?
Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, it's available. And the assessment platform will actually allow us to properly place our students in where their needs are. And then there is both a teacher-led component and a student-driven component. So the students can kind of follow along at their own pace as well as participate in in-classroom lessons with their teacher.
So would this course online be like auxiliaryed up to regular work? Or would it be a separate course that, that the student is taking?
The students, the students will participate in the program during the, their, their course during the regular school. It's not an additional course that they're signing up for as an elective. It is going to be embedded through, it, it's just a, it's just a better mode for us to, to deliver the teaching of grammar and writing through our, our currently existing curriculum. But to Dr. Eckler's point, there is addition, I would say auxiliary thing students can access beyond the school day that will also help, um, supplement what they're learning during the day.
So then would there be like assessments through online also regarding this particular aspect of the course?
Yep, yep, there's assessments that are aligned and, and the good thing is, is it's a, it's somewhat adaptive. So it allows us for us to assess students and know exactly where they are. So we can give them, instead of giving every student the same exact thing all the time, it allows students to kind of work at their, at their pace and allows teachers to differentiate their instruction. So it's a little bit, it's a, it's using, it's leveraging the tools for technology for better teaching.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stango. Who else had their hand up? Liz, the floor is yours.
I, I think Charles' question answered some of mine. But I'm just curious, what other school districts have had success using this? Is it culturally competent? You know, I'm not quite sure how this works.
So there are school districts across Connecticut that have implemented Quill. I don't have exact names. I can get those to you. I have a list of references that they provided us from in, in Connecticut schools. When it comes to cultural competency, I think Quill was the better of the two programs that we looked at. They had a lot more access to letting students understand the difference between sometimes the way we speak and the way we write and why there's differences in those and why it's important for us to understand those differences. They did a very good job of including that in what they do. They also include, so one of the major complaints about any online program is often that there's multiple, only multiple choice questions. And Quill actually allows our students the opportunity to type in their answers so we can see where their errors are, making it even more user-friendly for the teacher to figure out where, where the student's misunderstanding is.
No, and I'm, I'm hoping that the content is also, you know, culturally competent and so this could be very exciting, but I, I would like to see what other districts used it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Rocco Orso, I see your hand.
Yeah, Darren, you said it was fifty-three thousand, the total for the five years?
That's a total for five years.
Okay, thank you.
We just, we just made it over the fifty mark.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I don't see anybody's hand waving, so Dr. Eckler, do you want to take on the next agenda item, number seven? For the Power School Group for an Online Grading and Data Management System for Secondary Schools? Six through twelve?
Sure.
Or is that Darren? I don't know who's.
I don't know. Darren, do you want to lead us off? I can if you want me to.
I can, I can lead it off and then.
All right, that works.
I know you'll, you'll clean up nicely, so I think that the, the Power School, obviously we use them for student management system as a, an opportunity for us to leverage their platform for assessments. And one of the, one of the beautiful things about being able to expand our supervisor team is you start digging deeper and peeling back the onion and in all of our different content areas that may have been somewhat overlooked in the past or may not have had the, the magnifying glass on them. And one of the consistent asks for, from the supervisors are, we need a way to have an online assessment system because not everybody has a fancy, a fancy program. And so for what, so, for example, when our, when our world languages teachers provide assessments, there is no online assessment platform for them. Many of our CTE teachers and Mr. Maradi's content areas, there is no online assessment platform for when they take, when they take, when they take assessments in our district. So it's really difficult for school leaders. It's extremely difficult for supervisors and the chief academic officer to really understand how students are doing throughout the year. And sometimes we have to wait till the end of year tests to get a sense of how students are doing. And, and, and that's not really a great way to be able to, 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 to run a district and to be able to adjust and/or provide support for specific classrooms for either teachers or for students if we don't know how they're performing throughout the year. And so what this allows us to do is in those areas that, that we aren't, we don't have a robust assessment system already built into the curriculum. This allows us to take the written curriculum, especially like in science for grade six to twelve. We have the correct curriculum, as Commissioner Van Stone knows, many of you know this on the curriculum committee. We adopted a correct curriculum, but that correct curriculum has assessments that don't necessarily, that aren't necessarily housed in a platform. And so this would allow us to know in real time how students are doing in science after, after the first assessment, second assessment, third assessment. It'll allow us to look at teachers within the same building, teachers from different buildings, and to look at like, wow, this teacher is really doing an amazing job, but the group of students they're doing, maybe they can work with other teachers within their departments and/or across the district to help discuss what's working well in their classroom and, and why the students are doing and performing so highly on our common formative assessments here in the district. So, so basically this will allow us to provide an online platform for all of the subject areas that don't have it in our district, which is in several areas, specifically in the secondary schools from grade six to twelve. The contract is for five years. It's for two hundred seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That provides ninety-five hundred licenses for students for our online grading system. And we would start the training as early as this summer if the board approves at the next regular board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Thank you, Dr. Eckler. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Rocco Orso, I see your hand up.
Darren, this is a brand-new contract. It's not an amendment to the existing Power School contract, correct?
No, you know what? We, we, we tried to look into that to see if we could do an amendment, but right now, that, that's not the case. It is, it stands on its own. We, we, we tried to go that route, but thought this would be the better, at least we were told this is the better solution. So we, I believe the Power School, in talking to Will, Power School is now on a, on a, on a yearly basis. It's kind of built in and I see Will on the line here. He could probably speak better to that, so it is a standalone, standalone contract.
Yeah, the initial Power School contract is for implementation, training services. So it wasn't a year-to-year contract, so now we'll pretty much just pay the maintenance on it. So there was no two- or three-year or four-year plan on that. It was just an implementation contract for services.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Liz Brown, I see your hand.
Yeah, hi. Darren, this upgrade, do you foresee other upgrades with Power School to accommodate some of the issues you talked about?
Well, interesting you should bring that up. It, it, at our most recent school readiness meeting, actually Power School came up as possibly a platform that all school readiness providers in, in the city could, could use to possibly use for attendance so that we have a better idea of what the daily attendance is across the city at the school readiness level, which is a little off from the board, but they, they would leverage our, I think, our partnership with Power School to help get that done. In terms of, in terms of other areas of where we could, we could use Power School, you know, we, we, we're, we're working with them on, in special education as well. But the state is moving to a common platform for IEPs. And so that, that relationship will dissolve over the next two years and we will be working with, in a state platform for IEPs. So I don't foresee any, any, any new relationships with Power School in the future.
Great. I think the idea of including the preschool attendance is critical because we, we've seen from the data that attendance does make a difference. So this way we'll definitely be able to track it, so I'm very excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Anybody else have a question? We're, I don't see anybody's hands waving. So Michelle and, and Darren, thank you very much. Item number eight, request approval of amendment number two to the Professional Services Agreement with Teaching Strategies LLC for Early Childhood Preschool Curriculum. It says Maureen Bergen. I don't see Maureen anywhere. And Darren Schwartz. So Darren, is this yours?
Yeah, I'm pin-shitting because I know Maureen is taking a very well-deserved vacation at the, at the moment. And so I'm, I'm here tonight to discuss another amendment to our early childhood curriculum. We are adding several different components. And as you know, we are adding a few preschools in the district in the upcoming year, specifically at our international school. So therefore we have to amend the contract to add some additional resources in there specifically. The purchase of three English and two Spanish creative curriculum, six editions, in addition to the online assessments and the online professional development that is associated with those curriculums for our district. We also are adding in at the request of teachers, some additional teacher print editions for some of the units that they teach. As we, the original contract had, had a online teacher additions, but the teachers have requested that print additions also be provided as well. And so as you can see, there is a, a small increase to the original contract by approximately thirty-six thousand dollars. And, and I don't mean to minimize thirty-six thousand dollars, but I think in terms of providing additional classrooms, what they need for curriculum for preschool and to be able to provide the teachers with additional copies of what they need to, to teach our, our over one thousand students in preschool in the district. I think it's, it's money well, well-spent. Happy to answer any questions about it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Schwartz? Thank you, Darren. No one's got questions. Our next agenda item is number nine, request approval of amendment number two to the Professional Services Agreement with Cormier Consulting LLC for Teacher and Administrator Professional Development. Mr. Matt Brown, your name is associated with it, so you have the floor.
Great. Thank you, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners, Superintendent Dr. Ruffin. Yeah, I'm here to request approval for an amendment to the contract with Cormier Consulting. As you know, we have four schools now in the Commissioners Network. Three of them are getting ready to enter into year one. One of them will be high schools giving, excuse me, enter into year two. One of them will be high schools getting ready to enter into year one. All four of these schools, including Willby in its planning years, used Cormier Consulting as their primary professional development provider with a lot of success in terms of teacher fidelity to the model, in terms of uniformity of lesson delivery, and found that they'd like to continue this work. A lot of our research on turnaround demonstrates that the ability to have a common structure for lessons, a common vocabulary around instruction, of clustering these turnaround schools together helps to leverage that work for stronger student performance. And we'd like to be able to continue that work. This contract is for similar services. It is slightly increased because Willby, now that they're officially in the network, are going to have more days of professional development. All of it would be funded by the Commissioners Network grants from our power schools pulled together.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any questions for Mr. Brown while we have him here? I don't see anybody waving their hands. So you did a great job. A plus on your report card, Mr. Brown. And we, we move on to agenda item number ten. Request approval of an agreement with AAA Nursing Services LLC for Nursing Services. Miguel Pabon and Elaine Skaronsky, I see your names attached to it.
Yes. Good afternoon, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Board of Education Commissioners and Superintendent Ruffin. Here tonight to request approval for an agreement with AAA Nursing Services for the provision of nursing services for students with disabilities. This agreement is for up to eight nurses for a term of three years. We utilized the RFP process. Nine vendors submitted proposals. A committee was formed and reviewed all the proposals and interviewed the top five. As a result, they awarded the services, the service agreement to two different vendors. And the reason for that is due to the shortage of nurses and the number of nurses that we were requesting, which was a total of twelve. The main part of the project, which was about eight nurses, was awarded to AAA Nursing Services. And the remainder, four nurses, was awarded to the Pediatric Services of America, which is the next item on the agenda. Both vendors have provided services to students in our district in the past, and we have been very satisfied with their services. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Tom Van Stone, your first.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Miguel, where, where are the funds for this coming from? Is this something we'll, we'll do a transfer, maybe Doreen is the right person to ask, do a transfer for, from salaries in order to pay for this?
That's a great question for Doreen. I apologize. I'm gonna pass the buck to Doreen. Can you help me out with that one?
Yeah, these will come for our purchase service line in the general fund budget.
Thank you. Thank you, Doreen.
You're welcome.
Anybody else got a question for Miguel and Rocco Orso? Floor is yours.
I don't have a question. I just have a comment that we have done this in the past, had to split up contracts for nursing because of the shortage. So it's not unusual. It's just not.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Karen Harvey, I see your hand waving.
Yes, thank you. And this may be just, this is just a quick question. Where are the nurses coming from? Are they local nurses?
Well, the, the contract with these particular vendors is they, they would hire the nurses and provide those nurses to us. The nurses are also for, most likely are going to be like one-to-one nurses with students with significant disabilities. These are not the, the nurses in the nurse's office necessarily. These are nurses that they hire. To answer the question about whether or not they're local, I'm, I'm not sure about that answer.
You know, the, the reason I'm asking that question because I attended a meeting with the community and their comment was we hired from the outside or, you know, and I, you know, I kind of knew that wasn't true, but I just, that would prompt, okay, if we, because I, I noticed that from what I could gather before my wifi went out, was that, you know, AAA is from, it, it looked like Atlanta, Georgia, et cetera. So I, I'm just wondering if, if we were partaking in hiring of local nurses as opposed to nurses from out of state. That, that's all.
I would have to double check on that for you, for you and get back to you. However, my assumption on that would be even if they are a nationally based agency, which a lot of these typically are, they have local offices and we would have to hire local nurses because we need to have these people be able to come in to our schools. And so they may not be all from Waterbury, but they may be from this local area in order to be working in this area. But I can definitely follow up on that. Vice President Harvey.
I might be able to add to that a little bit. I can answer a little bit of that.
Okay, winning the floor is yours.
When we have the proposals come in, one of the requirements on the vendors part is to submit the resumes of the staff that they believe are going to be working on the project. And I was on the committee, so I had the opportunity to look through the resumes. And, and they are local people. You would be happy to know that.
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted you to know that we do look at, they might have other people coming in who are not in that grouping, but the requirement of the RFP is to put the resumes in of the staff who are going to perform the project. So I did look at all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Wayne.
You're welcome.
Harvey, anything else?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
All right, thank you. I see Darren Schwartz is in.
I just wanted to add just one last, one last piece to that. I believe those, those resumes are actually in, in part of the backup as well. It's probably stuck in between the two contracts. So I believe they, they, they were able to add those in as well. Commissioner Harvey, there are a few Waterbury residents in that and then some, from some local areas. But we can follow up with you and Miguel can follow up if there's more.
Yeah. And I couldn't, I couldn't see that because like I said, I was having some issues with my wifi. So it was six hundred and thirty-six. Just, just, it just freaked out because of that. So I couldn't see that, but. I'm sorry.
The wifi got scared.
It did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Anybody else got a question before we move on? Commissioner Liz Brown?
I just had a quick question in terms of the, the nursing staff of the Department of Public Health. How are we doing there in terms of capacity? Because I know that's always a problem. Are schools okay?
That, that information, I'll, I'll save you, Miguel, on that one. That, that information, it really lays on the, the the city side of, of things. So unfortunately, we're, you know, we're not, you know, we're, we're not in, in, in necessarily in charge of that process. But I could tell you that, just tangentially, that for, even just for like the summer work and, and they were able to fill all the needs and that office worked really hard at making sure that we had nurses for all our summer programming. And so haven't, we haven't, I haven't at least heard unless somebody else on the call has heard them ringing the bell for next year in terms of, in terms of being nervous for filling all the schools. Because I, I do believe Scott's office was able to fulfill all of our needs in summer, which are obviously quite substantial. And I, and I, and I know that they, it seems like they're on, on a good track for next year. But if there is, there is anything to add to that, I, I can follow up if, unless somebody else has more information.
Thank you. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you. Yep.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone, I see your hand.
You do. Thank you, Mr. President, through you. Just for the benefit of my fellow commissioners, the service agreement for this AAA Nursing actually lists an address in Stratford. So as was stated, they have a local, as opposed to just a national. So they, they do hold an office down right down to Stratford.
Thanks. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to agenda item eleven, which is a request for approval of a Professional Services Agreement with Pediatric Services of America doing business as Aviana Healthcare for Nursing Services. Mr. Pabon, the floor is yours.
Yes, so this one is mine. As I mentioned in the previous item, we are requesting this approval. This is the second part of that RFP process. So eight, eight nurses were offered to AAA and four of the twelve were offered to PSA or Pediatric Services of America doing business as Aviana Healthcare. Again, we have done business with this particular vendor before and we've been satisfied with their services. It is for also a three-year term.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Pabon or Elaine while we have them? All right. Looks like you did a good job again. And I'll head up to the next agenda item again to you and Elaine is a request approval of a Connecticut Community College's college facility request slash reservation agreement.
Yes, so this is one of my favorite requests to make because there's no cost. So I want to make that known upfront. However, it is requesting approval for a contract between the City of Waterbury and Nagatok Valley Community College for the use of a room that we use on campus for our students in our transition program. They utilize this room during the school year, the next school year. We have been using this room in the past. There is again, no cost associated with this particular contract. And I'm happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All right, I don't see anybody's hand waving. So again, you've done a stellar job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
We, we like that no cost clause. That got you a little extra points. Item number thirteen is a request approval of an agreement with Greater Waterbury Young Men's Christian Association, otherwise known as YMCA for a summer day camp program at Camp Matasha. This is SRT two funded. Doreen Biola, Darren Schwartz.
Thank you, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, remaining members of the, of the Board of Education, Dr. Ruffin, good evening. So before you is your request for approval for a contract with the YMCA. It's for the summer day camp program at Camp Matasha. This is funded, as you said, under the SRT two grant. Funds were put aside in the SRT two grant to have partnerships with local community organizations to provide summer camp programs this summer and have opportunity for students to go to these camps. What we're providing is a contract not to exceed the amount of a hundred and seventy thousand. It will provide registration fees for up to two hundred students that allows students to attend two, two-week camp sessions for the summer. Transportation is provided by the YMCA to the Camp Matasha. The program will run Monday through Friday from eight-thirty to, to three-thirty. And the cost again is not to exceed up to one-seventy. It's a maximum of four hundred and fifty-five dollars per camp per session. Any questions on that?
Any questions for Ms. Biola? Comments? Commissioner Liz Brown?
I might have missed it. How many students will they serve?
Two hundred.
Up to two hundred. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Harvey and then Commissioner Tom Van Stone.
Okay, um, yes. That's a mixture of male, female students?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm good.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Okay, now my mute plug wanted to work. Mike, thank you, Mr. President, through you. This question might actually be for Tara, I'm pretty sure. So I mean, where the Y is providing round trip bus transportation. Do we have any sort of MOU or MOA in place with the Y or things like liability? If they're providing the transportation for our students?
I believe that they need to have certain insurance coverages in place, which would cover transportation.
Okay, so. All right, I'll, I'll read some of the fine print on the contract, but it just popped in my head when I saw they were transporting students. Just to cover it. So if I find it in the weeds, I'll let it go. If not, maybe I'll drop you an email. Just to kind of, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. Anybody else have a question? Commissioner Liz Brown, one more time.
I'm wondering, how are the two hundred students selected? Was it a certain age group or?
Yeah, I think so. So we've, this has been a unique summer. So it's been, it's been pretty much just a blitz of getting the word out to all parents, parents squared. We've used two summer coordinators this summer, Shay, Marie, Ari and Sonia. And I'm gonna mess up her name, so I apologize, but it's Selena. And they've been great at trying to blitz it out there and get information out, putting it up information on the website. And, and I think that, you know, through that, that word of mouth, we just had a meeting on Tuesday regarding summer, summer camps. And the YMCA is already basically full, is pretty much what they've said. And so I'm gonna take the opportunity to say, but the Boys and Girls Club, which is the next agenda item, is looking for more students. But those two hundred students have already filled up quite quickly at Camp Matasha at the YMCA. YMCA itself obviously is a pretty big pillar of the community and they spread the world word and that, that pretty much within, within a few weeks, that did it.
Mr. Schwartz, any other questions? Next item is a similar effort, number, number fourteen. Request approval of an agreement with Boys and Girls Club of Greater Waterbury, Inc. for summer day program, summer day camp program. SRT two funded, Doreen and/or Darren, the floor is yours.
Again, thank you. This is again, a summer camp for the, through the Boys and Girls Club for their summer enrichment program. It'll service up to a hundred and seventeen youths for a seven, one week, up to seven week, seven weeks, I'm sorry, that begin June twenty-eighth through August thirteenth. It'll provide at a cost not to exceed a hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. It'll again be the cost of a hundred and fifty-five dollars per camper each week, plus a one-time fifty-dollar registration fee. And they will be provided breakfast and lunch and a T-shirt by the Boys and Girls Club. And it'll run Monday through Thursday from seven to five.
Thank you, Doreen. Any questions for Doreen and/or Darren on this one? Commissioner Karen Harvey, I see your hand raised. You're muted there.
All right, there we go. All right, now. A fifty-dollar registration?
One time. Yeah, one-time registration fee. So the one fifty-five and then the fifty, so it's, it's really like two oh five.
All right, so it's just clarify for me because I thought that when we use SRT ones, this means that this is free for the kids.
Yeah, this, this is what this contract is. It's through the SRT funds. So that's the cost that we're going to be paying for our students.
We will pay for, okay.
Yes, this is out of SRT two.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
Uh, any other questions and or comments? Thank you very much, Doreen and Darren. You did a fabulous job. Item number fifteen is a request approval of a Professional Services Agreement with Catapult Learning LLC to provide Waterbury non-public schools Title I tutoring services. Doreen, your name's on this one.
Hey, hello again. This is again, a contract with Catapult Learning for Tutoring Services to provide services through core academic subjects, that is reading, mathematics, science, et cetera, for students in K's, K through twelve, who attend any Waterbury non-public schools. It was through an RFP process that Catapult was selected. This contract will run from the year twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-six, not to exceed two hundred seventy-six thousand and twenty-four dollars. And this is paid through Title I funding on the non-public side portion.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Rocco Orso?
That's my understanding that the tutors are available.
My understanding that the tutors or available are handled originally by Linda Riddick-Bearn's office. And now we're gonna be paying 200 and something thousand dollars for an outside firm to do this? Doesn't seem.
Yeah, I think that they've used them in the past and I think that they like what they get out of these tutors. I'm not sure. I'm actually kind of batting cleanup here for Judge Clark. So I'm sorry if I don't know all the full detail on this.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot there, but I think that, and again, I, I, I don't understand. And again, I'm not saying to you, I just don't understand why we're paying 200 and something thousand dollars for something that was done in Linda Riddick-Bearn's office before. I, I was involved with this a couple of years ago, that's why I know what's going on. And I, and I'm surprised that, well, it happened after my watch, but I don't think it's, I don't, I think it's a waste of money. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Former Purchasing Director Orso. Any other comments and/or questions for Doreen while we put her on the spot and make her blush even more so? Oh, Darren Schwartz?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to add in just about the tutoring piece, Mr. Orso, and I think one of the things you notice is probably the higher price. We're also, we're starting to see that a lot now because of the monies that are flowing into systems that we've noticed that the tutoring costs have really skyrocketed because everyone, big systems now have a lot more money and part of the SRT ARP, which will be coming to you in a, in the near future. One of the SRT ARP pieces, they talk a lot about tutoring and providing one-on-one services for students. So I'm not sure if that's connected. I'm just making the assumption. But from what I'm hearing from my colleagues across the state, is some of these, some of this work through the pandemic has kind of taken off a little bit in terms of pricing. But we can get some more information from you through Linda. I also don't know if, in the past, I think we've used like local tutors as well, like local people in addition to using a company. And I, and anecdotally, that wealth started drying up a little bit as well, from my understanding. And, but I can follow up with, I'm sure Doreen and I can follow up with Linda and get you a better picture of that.
Thank you, Darren. Commissioner Rocco Orso?
Yeah, not to sound like a broken record, but I know that there was local people and retired teachers that did the tutoring. And to me, if you're spending 24 dollars or 28 dollars or 32 dollars to, to a tutor and to give an extra money for this company, just to do the same thing that we were doing before. Again, I know that's like a broken record, but I think it's a waste of money.
Well, I think this was brought on the enthusiasm out of some of our non-public schools. And I think that's where the push went to go out for an RFP on this. But that's, you know, we can find out more information and get back to you.
Thank you. Commissioner Charles L. Stango, I see your hand. You're still muted, Charles.
All right, how's that? All right, just a quick question. As I recall, the tutors that we used against the grants office, they were all retired, many of them, retired Waterbury Public School teachers. Is there an issue with not being able to fulfill those positions? Or, or what? I, I agree with Commissioner Orso. That it seems like what was, the other plan was working in the past. Retired teachers were very, very well qualified to do this job and they enjoyed the extra work after they were retired. And I, I don't, I've lost track of what was happening to them with all this learning from home kind of thing. So I, I'm not sure about what's going on there either right now.
Thank you, Mr. Stango. Darren, you got the look of response on your face? No? Doreen, you don't want to take a stab at responding to that, because I could tell that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not really sure, you know, what it's like at this stage after COVID, if they're having a hard time. I, I do think that this was in the process. And I think it was really more on the non-public schools wanting to use their money. Maybe having used Catapult and being pleased with them, that they put a push in to have an RFP done. I think it's more on the non-public schools wanting this than anything else.
Just to, just to be clear, Waterbury Public Schools is still using local, mostly retired teachers, so I'm not retired, but Waterbury Public Schools, this is, this is purely for the private schools up until June 30th, 2022, as part of their Title I funding. And so this is not, this is not the Waterbury Public Schools using this company.
Thank you for that clarification. Doreen, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Okey-dokey. Now we move on to item number 16, and Doreen, you get to do it all over again. It's a request approval of a transfer in the 2020 slash 2021 fiscal year budget. Ms. Biola, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Pagano. However, I do not have a transfer to provide tonight. As you know, the fiscal year ended yesterday. We started a new fiscal year today. It's a little hard to get all the transfer that I would need, the final transfer for the year. So I'm just requesting that I can provide that to you on the meeting on the 15th. I will try to get you that backup as soon as I complete with it. So you can have it ahead of time to review and if we can push that to the 15th regular meeting.
Okay, by me. Anybody else got a comment or a question on this before we move on? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Biola.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Item 17 is Superintendent's Update. Dr. Ruffin, the floor is yours, and I'll be off camera, but I'll be right back.
Thank you, Commissioners. And I really don't have an update for today. We've, we were successful in completing the 2021 school year. I'm gonna thank everyone for their very hard work and dedication during. I'm very proud of the students, very proud of our graduates for 2021. Very pleased to be with the teachers and the administrators and the staff and the board as we ended this most tumultuous of school years, but we ended it on a high note. Our students did very well. We were challenged with many things. We were able to overcome many obstacles and we learned new things along the way. And we're very pleased that we have planned our beginning for the 2122 school year with a virtual academy that's still under construction, but we do have our plan. And, and we are sticking to that plan. And as the summer moves forward, we are constantly going to be keeping in touch with the CDC, the Health Department, the Crisis Management Team, the State Department of Education, as well as any other directives that may come from the Governor's Office as we lead into a new school year. We anticipate that our students are going to be participating in a lot of great summer activities. Certainly, summer camps at an unprecedented number of camp opportunities that our students have never been afforded before and at no cost to the students and to their families. We're very appreciative to all of the organizations that have partnered with us and of course, the ones that will partner with us as we move forward and, and provide those same services and maybe even more, if not during the school year, next summer as well. And I just want to tell everybody to stay connected during July and August as we continue to issue updates about what the new school year will look like and to expect that there are going to be changes along the way as we prepare to have our students back 100% in person while we're still developing a virtual academy that is under construction, but certainly not ready to share today. We will have many more community meetings as we get closer to writing our SRT three, or in other words, our ARPSR, which is not due until August, but we will have many more community forums and opportunities for our, all of our stakeholders, our in-school students, staff, administrators, as well as our parents and as well as the community as we take on this next piece of the, of the process. We should have very soon coming to the Board of Ed an update and a plan for our facilities study, which we anticipate will begin in, in July. And when we get the next step, it will be brought to the Board so that we can move forward. But you can expect that all of the Commissioners, as well as the community stakeholders and all of our school staff, students as well. It will be kept abreast of what that facility study will entail and how we're going to use that as a roadmap to move our district forward and to perhaps also strategically spend some of the SRT two funding. Keeping in mind that we have five priorities in the ARPSR, as well as the SRT two funding, that keep it very close to student supports. You know, the building of the technology and in, in continuing our one-to-one implementation, the social and emotional, the community engagement piece, which is critically important to us. And of course, much of the work that we need to do in terms of facilities, which we are certain that we will not be able to complete all of the facilities needs with our SRT money, but we believe that with the facility study, we can certainly devise a really strong plan for how we're going to be able to build our infrastructure in 21, 22, 23, and 24, and perhaps moving forward further. So that's all I have for an update at this time, but do expect a lot more information, especially at the beginning of August as we will begin, exciting, building an excitement over the 2122 school year. I thank the Commissioners and I thank all of the leadership and certainly my senior cabinet for sticking with all of us and sticking together and for ending the year on, on this high note. And certainly for the work that all of them are doing this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Charles Stango, your hand is, your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you. Doctor, just going back to the summer programs for a second. Do you have all the positions you needed filled? I'm wondering if you had any problem with the expanded programs finding enough teachers willing to work the programs?
I believe all of the positions that were available, all the teachers that were sought, as well as all of the assistance has been in place. And our summer programs are ready to start and start on time, and I think they're all fully staffed.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Commissioner Liz Brown?
Yeah, Dr. Ruffin, I'm wondering, legislation was passed, a couple of pieces of legislation that impact some of our planning. The state is being required, the State Department of Education, to develop a statewide virtual school for students, I believe, K through 12. So I just want to put that out there, whether or not that's a complication in our own efforts to do that, just to think about. And the second thing is, and I believe, Anne, correct me if I'm wrong, 10% of new alliance money must be used for minority teacher training to pay for the relay program or one of the RESC programs. So I'm wondering what that figure is for Waterbury? If Doreen could get us how much money that would be out of our alliance district money for that purpose? You don't have to tell me now, but I'd be interested. And whether or not, you know, it's something we think is a good idea or if we want to talk about it, because I know, I'm not sure how much money it's, it's, it's involved. So I just something to put on the table.
Thank you.
I just wanted to respond to Commissioner.
Okay.
But that's okay. I'll, I'll take Commissioner Sweeney's.
Anne, you have the floor?
Yeah, I just wanted to back up on what Liz just said. I have concerns on this piece of legislation because it will, the state will designate what we should do in terms of minority recruitment in a district that has been extremely in the forefront of minority recruitment. So that's one piece of it. The other piece of it is there is a piece in that legislation that says that district, non-alliance districts can participate, but it doesn't specify if they also have to keep in. So those are just two very huge concerns that I have with that legislation. And Liz and I have talked and we hope to be working with CAE, working on a resolution for this as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Dr. Ruffin, you wanted to mention a couple of things?
Yes, and, and you know, it was shared with me by Mr. Schwartz earlier that what the state's intent is to be able to build the virtual, the virtual learning environment. I, I am in full support of Waterbury conducting its own virtual study and moving forward. Is what I do not know is whether the state would do that and it would be an expense to the school districts. And I did not want to put Waterbury Public Schools in jeopardy of having to pay money to someone to educate our students. So the work that the teachers and the staff are currently doing in devising our program, I want them to continue to do that so that we can have something that is of substance to offer to our students in the fall while the state is working on theirs.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Thank you, Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Sweeney. Commissioner Harvey, is your hand raised?
Yes, it is.
Okay, floor is yours.
Alrighty, thank you. All right. One comment, and that is regarding the virtual academy. Questions are, are rising from folks in meetings I've attended in the community, so I am referring them to you, Dr. Ruffin, because they're questioning what, you know, what we plan on doing in, in September. So, so just know that. And so that prompts another question in regards to a phone call to your office during this, or how is that being handled? Does that go into voicemail? Is someone there to respond to questions? If you could outline that quickly.
Messages that are sent to my office are answered by a member of my staff. We do not have a virtual academy to publish at this point. It is under construction. And it's also listed in our 2021, 21, 22 opening of school that we are returning in person and that the virtual academy is under construction. It will not be developed or ready for publication during the month of July. I anticipate that we're gonna have updates to the Board and to the public sometime in August. And I also envision that it will be a part of our discussion as we prepare for the ARPSR.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so next comment is, is this, I did send a few weeks ago, well, to the mayor regarding information on our relay program. Not our relay program, relay program and the residential portion. We had some discussion on that, of that. Now, it's a bill, Liz, if you could help me out here with that. That relay, if, if we here in Waterbury would sponsor, it's not sponsoring, you're not using the right word, but that we would pay for any candidates that wanted to partake in the relay program if they agreed to teach for a certain amount of time here in Waterbury. So I don't know quite where that stands right now. It's not a Waterbury thing. I know it's a state thing. So Liz, can you kind of help me out here with that? I think it's a.
You know, I think it's, again, it's part of an omnibus bill related to minority hiring and retention. There's loan, I, I haven't, I haven't memorized the whole bill. They have, they have quite a bit of incentives for districts and trying to retain teachers. So I really don't know all the details, but it's in that market. I think it's, it's a learning curve because there was so much, the, the bill was over 800 pages long. So I'm looking at it, but I, I think there's opportunity for the districts.
Okay, okay.
I have been, I've been in conversation with our Human Capital Department and we are on top of it. And, and when it is time to move forward, we will have a proposal for the Board as how we anticipate moving forward with that relay program.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Thank you, Karen Harvey, and thank you, Liz Brown. Anybody else got a question or comment before we head off? All right, item number 18 and 19. Will Zuda, the floor is yours. Unmute yourself, Will.
Good evening, President Pagano.
Good evening, President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin. With the approval, the Committee of School Facilities and Grounds, Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the use of school facilities at no charge by the following organizations or city departments, Human Resource for Maloney Gym and Classroom on Friday, July 30th, and then the Park and Rec, Rick and Quavis for Kennedy Pool on Saturday, July 10th and Saturday, July 17th for life care training.
Thank you. Any questions for Will? I don't see anybody's hand waving. Will, you got the next one too?
There are no outside.
Oh, okay, good. You did a stellar job yourself there, Will, except for your mute issue, but we'll work on that for you. Um, okay, with that, the next agenda item, and thank you, Mr. Zuda. The next item is the superintendent's notification to the board. Dr. Ruffin.
Commissioner Pagano, it's all in black and white.
All right, I've just gone by the script that says give you five minutes, so. With a fast five minutes, kid, I'll, I'll write it up accordingly.
All right.
Um, our next agenda item is we're going into executive session. Commissioner Anne Sweeney, can you do a little ever cadaver for us, please?
Motion to convene into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment and employment, dismissal of a public officer or employee in regards to a principal and a vice principal appointment. Dr. Ruffin, Juan Mendoza, and Tara Shaw will join the board in the executive session.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, ayes have it, motion carries. We will see everybody in executive session land. Welcome back and Commissioner Anne Sweeney, the floor is yours.
Motion to return from executive session to the regular order of business. No votes were taken.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion, questions, or comments? Please signify by saying aye if you're in agreement for us to return. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, ayes have it, motion carries. We are back in regular session. And Anne Sweeney, I believe the floor is yours again for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Any discussion, comments, or questions? Please signify by saying aye if you're in agreement for this.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, ayes have it, motion carries. We are adjourned. Good evening and welcome to this special meeting for the Waterbury Board of Education for Thursday, July 1st, 2021. We are doing this meeting virtually via Zoom. Our first order of business is a silent prayer. And Dr. Ruffin, do you have anything to add before we move on?
No, Commissioner, I do not.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone, you did such a stellar job on our opening meeting. Would you mind doing it again for us, please, the pledge of allegiance?
Got it. I'm just as honored as the second thing. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Vanstone. Commissioner, I mean, Carrie Swain, our clerk, would you please do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez? Commissioner Nardozzi?
Here.
Commissioner Orso?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno? Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Vanstone?
Present.
President Pagano?
Present.
You have a corn.
Thank you very much. Item number four, Committee on School Personnel. Commissioner Charles L. Stango, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 4.1, regarding the committee, regarding the Crosby High School Principal. With the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the appointment of Michael C. Veronow as principal of Crosby High School effective immediately.
Second.
Any discussion, questions, comments?
Commissioner?
Yes, the floor is yours, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Commissioner. It is my pleasure and my honor to recommend Michael Veronow as the principal of Crosby High School. Mike is very well-prepared to be able to assume this position as the leader of, of the school. He was an administrator or he was a teacher at Crosby, very invested in the work of Crosby, had the pleasure of really being more familiar with his work when he was assigned as the assistant principal at Westside. And he has done some great work along with the principal there and the entire staff in working on their Commissioners Network plan and they're being accepted into the Commissioners Network. I feel with his skills and his talents and what he has learned as a Commissioners Network school, he will take that to further move Crosby forward. And then I'm very pleased and excited to be able to appoint him as the, and recommend to you the appointment of Michael Veronow as the principal of Crosby High School. And I believe he is also here with his family tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Any other comments and or questions from the board? Commissioner Rocco Orso, I see your hand up.
I just want to congratulate Michael on his appointment and I know he'll do a great job.
Thank you, Commissioner Orso. Anyone else want to add in congratulations and/or questions? All right, well, I guess now is the time. Please signify, all in favor, if you're.
Mr. President?
Roll call?
Yes.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Roll call, please.
Roll call vote, thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardozzi? Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanstone?
Yes.
President Pagano?
Most definitely, yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Mr. Veronow, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Do you have any comments or questions, please? The floor is yours while you're here.
I do, sir. President Pagano, Vice President Harvey, Honorable Waterbury Board of Education Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin, and District Administrators, thank you. I humbly and confidently accept my appointment as the Crosby High School Principal. I also want to thank my tremendous support system, my family, and the people that I love, whom, some of which are with us tonight. Without them, none of this would be possible. They're so good to me and my two sons, Luke and Cole. And I love them very much and very lucky to have them in my life. Nostalgia aside, and there is a lot of nostalgia with me and Crosby. However, I truly believe in the potential that the students and staff at Crosby High School have. I've seen it up close and from afar. However, I've learned potential is nothing if you don't act on it. And I have an unwavering sense of urgency to make Crosby High School maximize its potential. And I expect to encourage all Crosby stakeholders to have that same sense of urgency. We will improve academically at Crosby. Our graduation rate will continue to rise. The early college high school through post-university will become a beacon of light for our district. Students will be ready for college and career opportunities and we will give back to a city that has given me and so many others so much. As many of you know, there is something special about the Bulldog pride. People that have graduated from Crosby speak of the school proudly. Our teachers are proud to work within the walls of 300 Pier Pont Road and the students know that once they're a Bulldog, they will always be a Bulldog.
That's right.
Together, we will harness the pride. We'll use it as fuel and we'll put equitable systems in place to set our students up for success, not only during high school, but for the rest of their lives. After a period of time where, where we've all endured so much and, and we've shown so much grit, it's now time to be positive, hopeful, and optimistic about what lies ahead for Crosby. We're going to work extremely hard, but we will reap the benefits. From the bottom of my heart, I thank you for this appointment and I cannot wait to work with the entire Crosby community to maximize Crosby High School's potential. I thank you.
Bravo. Thank you. And congratulations to his family who is here joining him. I'm looking at everyone. Everyone's proud and smiling.
And crying.
And crying.
Mike, could you introduce your family, Mike?
Yeah, please.
Mr. Orso, we have my mom and sister, Carol Veronow, Christine Veronow.
Hi, guys.
My stepmother, Rena Veronow. My, my brother and sister-in-law, Patrick, and Lauren Veronow and Maddie and Lily.
Hi.
My, my two nieces. Luke and Cole are not here, but, but they, they wish us all very well and they say hi as well. And I hope I didn't forget anybody.
Now you got them all from what I can see.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And congratulations again. Good job. Commissioner Liz Brown, your hand up.
I, I just want to say I'm the proud mother of two Bulldog graduates.
And we, we will make you proud. We will make you proud.
Please don't hold against me. I'm a Wildcat alum, but we did good against you guys in football when I was there. Commissioner Karen Harvey? You're muted, dear.
Okay, there we go. Congratulations. Now, just to let you know, just in case you didn't know, I am a proud Crosby Bulldog and I will be watching very closely on what happens, but I feel very confident in, in what you spoke about. And just, just make us, we brought Crosby to where it is now. So I'm looking at you taking it and, and bringing it further, so thank you much and good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Harvey.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Anyone else? Well, I think everyone has spoken. Mr. Veronow, again, congratulations. Please reach out if we can help you at all.
Thank you, President.
Thank you. Commissioner Charles Stango, your, your duties aren't over yet. You're up next.
Very good. Mr. President, item number 4.2, regarding the Willby High School Vice Principal Appointment. With the appointment, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the appointment of Janine Minault Cale as the High School Vice Principal, Willby High School, effective immediately.
Second.
Any, any questions or, questions or comments? All right, Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Does.
Doctor, want to make comments?
Dr. Ruffin?
Yes.
Dr. Ruffin, I'm sorry.
That, that's okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, I, I am very excited to recommend Janine Minault Cale as the Vice Principal, Vice Principal for Willby High School. You know, we have a unique opportunity at, at Willby this year to, to fill two critical positions in vice principals as the, Willby High School has also a commitment for the Commissioners Network. So I'm very excited about that work. I'm excited that Janine has the, the skills and the talent and the expertise in the mathematics department, particularly secondary math. She's joined us a little over a year ago. Most of the time has been in COVID, but there's been a tremendous amount of learning and, and, and growth in the development of what we need to do in mathematics. I think she's going to be a very strong advocate for all of the students at Willby and it gives me a great sense of pride to recommend her to the board as the Assistant Principal at Willby High School.
Thank you, Superintendent Ruffin. Any questions or comments before we go for a roll call vote? Madam Clerk, the floor is yours.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Nardozzi?
Yeah.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Vanstone?
Yes.
President Pagano?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much and I don't think anyone's here from her.
Not tonight. I'll introduce her and have the, the Willby team come on and introduce her the next time.
Okay, thank you very much. I think.
Motion adjourned?
I thank you. May I have a second?
Okay.
Second.
Would anyone like to discuss the virtues of the adjournment? Everyone, thank you very much. The motion passes. We are adjourned. Have a great Fourth of July weekend. And a special thank you to Commissioner Sweeney, who is down in Aruba celebrating her anniversary and is still sober. If I was in that boat, I sure as hell wouldn't be, but thank you for those 2017 miles. We don't get frequent flyers on this club. All right, everyone, have a good weekend, a good holiday. Be safe.
Bye, all. Bye.
Have a nice holiday.
Bye, everybody.
Be safe.
Blacks and Latinos have limited access to prevention, treatment, and recovery services for substance use disorders. And while they have similar rates of opioid misuse as the general population, in recent years, blacks have experienced the greatest increase in rates of overdose death from opioids, according to a 2020 study. To learn more about how to reduce your risk, come see me. I'm Samuel Bowens and I'm a part of the Waterbury Health Department Prevention Unit. We are a judgment-free zone and we are here to help.